I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please stand and identify themselves to the record now by stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Would everyone please join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zarella?
Here.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes, remote.
Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
Counselor Cregan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally is absent. Counselor Fleming?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Shilts?
Here.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Here.
And Counselor Walsh?
Here.
We have 10 members present.
Thank you very much. We have no one logged in remotely for public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to participate in public comment, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and identify the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and you will be given not more than two minutes. Seeing none, we'll go into our announcements. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, January 30th, 2025, from 4:00 until 5:30 p.m. in room 205 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. Members of public are invited to participate in a citizen-led group researching the history of Black residents in Fitchburg and the region. The group meets at the Fitchburg Historical Society every Wednesday from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. They are also preparing for Black History Trivia Night at the Society on Saturday, February 8th, 7:00 p.m., but are also researching Black individuals, businesses, and associations to add to the archives. There is no cost. They welcome students, adults, and seniors, and this meets again every Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Historical Society. You can call (978) 345-1157 to learn more or just come and join. Before we go to the report of the Committee on Records, I believe there was an additional comment from the Chair of Economic Development?
There is. I've got an update, and this report is intended to inform the public about ongoing economic initiatives in Fitchburg, including economic development projects put forward by the city. We're going to start with Fitchburg Airport. Last week, Airport Manager Peter Kettle and I met and had a fascinating conversation about the airport. Now, for those just tuning in, a couple of years ago, Fitchburg was allowed to extend our runway to 5,001 feet. That extension allows larger planes, including jets, to arrive and depart. So last year, and I was surprised to hear this, but it's great, 56 corporate jets arrived at Fitchburg Airport. So last year, we had 56 corporate jets, more than one a week, and when they arrived, a rental car arranged by the airport manager awaited these folks. These individuals did their business in the region, then refueled their planes and flew to the next destination. Fitchburg Airport sold them their fuel. Future amenities at the airport will include airplane hangars, some of which will be large enough to accommodate a jet with a 106-foot wingspan. 106-foot wingspan. So that is more than, I think, that back wall through this building across the road to the back of Popper's Pantry. That is how big that wingspan is. Now, in non-aviation news, this month, Fitchburg Airport issues an RFP, and for those listening, that is a request for proposals for a developer to create a restaurant next to the administration building. So that space is approximately 20,000 square feet, and it will include restaurant and parking. In late January, that RFP goes live to the public. Members of the public, please be advised, this proposal will stay live through May 1st, 2025, to allow potential developers to appropriate time for a thoughtful proposal. Colleagues here at the table, if you know anyone who would be interested in this opportunity, have them reach out to Economic Development Director Mary Jo Bohart at (978) 829-1896. Now, outside of City Hall, oh, before we move on, I'm going to pass you something that I made up, and I handed them to Airport Manager. These are bookmarks, and they say, "Economic Development Happens Every Day at Fitchburg Airport." They're designed to be sticking at the top of your computer. So if you put a little tape there, you can just be reminded we have this airport where economic development takes place. But in non-aviation news, Fitchburg, sorry, we did that. Outside of City Hall, an update on HDIP, Housing Development Tax Incentive Program. These are the tax credits which developers use to create market-rate multifamily housing. This is a state-run program, and I found out today that Fitchburg received two awards of 12 that were given by the state of Massachusetts. The entire Commonwealth, we got two. So those awards go to the Ivor Johnson, Ivor Mills Project on River Street, which is a housing project with 96 units. So they qualified for $2.5 million, and the Paul Tossi Group is developing 347355 Main Street further east, and they have eight units, and they qualified for $480,000. So that's about $3 million coming in HDIP money for Fitchburg, and another example of Fitchburg being on the leading edge. Also, local development, please, everyone, save the date for the grand opening of the Boot Barn, and that is at the Twin City Plaza. It will be Saturday, February 8th, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. with music. This is open to the public. This will be the fifth Boot Barn in New England. The others are in Natick and West Springfield. There's also one in Nashua, New Hampshire, and in Manchester, Connecticut. Finally, I think I'll always do, save this for the end, Fine Dining. Marcello's is a new family-owned restaurant open on Airport Road in the old Il Forno space. Folks may recall that space had been vacant for more than a few years. Marcello's opened during December, and they offer delicious Mediterranean and Middle Eastern cuisine, and I have eaten there, and as a Middle Eastern person, I can tell you, it is wonderful and authentic and delicious. So this is the economic development report, and thank you this week for input from Fitchburg Airport, community development, and economic development. So keep watching this space. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Report of the Committee on Records. We have Vice President Van Hazinga standing in.
Yes, on behalf of Counselor Dina Tally, who couldn't make it tonight, I'd like to say that we reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have motion and second to approve the report of the Committee on Records. If there is no objection, it stands approved.
We need to do roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. I do need to do a roll call vote, as we have Counselor Boishman participating remotely. Madam Clerk?
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
And Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
That passes 10 members.
Thank you. We have a communication, we have a few communications from Her Honor, the Mayor, the appointment of Canine Atlas as a member of the Fitchburg Police Department, and a new appointment of, or, yes, a new appointment of Brittany Fish to the position of Human Resources Director for the City of Fitchburg to fill the vacancy of Susan Davis. This is an interim appointment, valid until a qualified permanent appointment is confirmed by this body or six months, whichever comes first. We also have four promotions within the police department. Promotion of Lieutenant Jeffrey J. Howe to the rank of Police Captain, Sergeant Christopher Belafato to the rank of Police Lieutenant, Officer Michael Faucher to the rank of Police Sergeant, and Officer Daniela Lopez to the rank of Police Sergeant. Congratulations to all those promoted. We have a communication from the city clerk. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. I just wanted to talk about our election calendar that we had voted on, and the Elections Division contacted all cities and town clerks, and September 16th is the Jewish holiday Rosh Hashanah, so we are changing, with your approval, the election from September 23rd to September 16th, which gives us another week of vote-by-mail applications coming in and out. So I just needed, or requesting your vote to approve the amended calendar. So our city council meeting will move from Tuesday to Wednesday, the 17th.
Counsel Fleming?
It's for the Rosh Hashanah holiday?
Yes.
My calendar shows that on the 23rd.
Yes, the election is being moved from 23rd to the 16th, and so our 16th council meeting needs to be moved.
To the 17th?
All right, okay.
Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to reschedule the Tuesday, September 16th, meeting of the city council to Wednesday, September 17th for this year. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it is approved. Report of the-- President, we don't need another roll call. Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm going to keep forgetting that a couple more times tonight.
Just touch ya.
Works for me. All right, Madam Clerk?
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
And Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
That passes 10 members.
Thank you very much. Report of the Public Safety Committee. Counselor Green?
Yes, we met tonight and took up the following order, 006-25, ordered that authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the City of Fitchburg and the Fitchburg Police Union as outlined in the attached order with discussion. We recommend that the attached petition be approved pending being sent on to Finance Committee tomorrow night.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve pending the approval of Finance?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. On the motion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
And Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
That passes 10 members.
Thank you. We have four orders which will stand referred to Finance. 008-25, funds from the Department of Conservation and Recreation in the approximate amount of $50,000 for the installation of a concrete slab at the outdoor fitness park and fitness studio in Coolidge Park. 009-25, funds from Department of Conservation and Recreation in the approximate amount of $40,000 for the installation of a new digital scoreboard at Nicodus Field. 010-25, expenditure of funds from the Violence Against Women Act grant in the approximate amount of $73,951.70 for the purpose of continuing the Police Department's Civilian Domestic Violence Advocate Program. And 011-25, approving the transfer of $7,000 from CDBG Year 49 Crockerfield Broad Street Entry Project to Year 50 Crockerfield Restoration Project. Those will all stand referred to Finance. Lastly, we have 012-25 regarding a lease for the Fitchburg Airport, and I have a request for suspension of the rules on this item.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk?
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
And Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
That's 10 members.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kettle, if you'd like to come up and present your petition?
President Zarella, city councillors, Masqualia, thank you very much for the opportunity once again to talk to you and to present to you tonight. I'd like to introduce you to Robert Montana. Robert is the Vice President of Operations for Rockin Horse Enterprises, and he will be answering most of the questions if there are any this evening. So allow me to just try and see if I can get this shared on my screen. Excellent. Just one comment here, I'm always surprised that now Counselor Boishman's never here when I make a presentation, so I don't know if I frightened him off, so I'm sure I'll have something to say this evening. So first of all, Rockin Horse Enterprises. Okay, we're not getting the link. I'm going to have to do it manually, I hope. Dan, I need your help.
Under the rescue, yeah.
It's on the screen, but it's not.
He's even got the beard like the old one, too. So let's make sure that PowerPoint is selected. Try clicking it.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah, but just because PowerPoint needed to be selected in there.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you. So Rockin Horse Enterprises. Bob, if you'd just like to give a little bit of an information on your company and what you've been doing the past years and why you think you can do this for the airport?
All right. Robert Montana, I'm the Vice President of Rockin Horse Enterprises, and I've been in the construction business for 35-plus years. I have mainly, well, for the past 30 or so years, built gas stations. So this is a, you know, this is a little bit of a new endeavor for us. I mean, the concept's the same, a metal building's a metal building, but, so I had approached Peter a little while back in regards to the shortage of aircraft hangars at the airport, and he had told me that there was a couple people that had, you know, attempted to do it before and ran into some problems, so we got together, came up with some good ideas, ran it by MassDOT, FAA, and finally came up with what I believe is a great solution for the airport, to build some new T-hangers over there for aircraft and kind of stimulate, you know, the economy over there, help things out, and, you know, we kind of have multiple phases planned. Our first phase is going to be for 30 units.
Don't destroy the presentation.
No, sorry. For you to put together this wonderful presentation that will explain, you know, everything that we plan on doing, so.
All right, thanks, Bob. Thank you. You all know the airport master plan, which you all approved approximately 18 months ago. Well, if you look at the red three lines at the top, that's where the first phase was going to be until I was requested by Masqualia to actually do something else. So the system will continue. So the best thing I thought to do was get GAIL associates involved, because they are the consultant to the airport, and they know the ins and outs working with MassDOT and the FAA, and they came up with this first sketch here that shows the contours around the airport, and you can see the bottom right-hand, there's three large hangars, one small one, and then at the top, that's another hangar. They are existing. So it's on that property that we're actually going to build the new hangars. So the first phase is 30 hangars, and you can see the top two, which are large box hangars, they're 100 by 150. We've decided not to put them there, but to take them closer to the airport, because jets will be in those hangars. So moving forwards, just take it away, so this is going to be the first phase in that position, but thinking about it, and maybe you've all been down to the airport, if you come down now, you'll see the situation that we have. The biggest problem here is that when the sun comes over, it's nice, it warms the front side of the hangars, but not the backside, so the current hangars that we've got on the right-hand side, sometimes it's very difficult to open the actual hangar doors, because the sun doesn't get there. But on the southern side, where you see there's no shadow there, beautiful. So we decided to move them to 90 degrees, which now, when the sun comes over, both sides of the hangar sets will get the sun, they'll get heating, there won't be any more problems with the draws that we've had for the past 20 years with the current FAC-T hangars. So if we look at the situation now with the FAC-T, you can see they've still got problems, but we don't have, so, which is really, really good, and I think that maybe made a lot of people come to the Fitchburg Airport, and we're attracting people from Worcester, from Hanscom Field, and also from Nashua, New Hampshire. So we are increasing the client base at the airport, the tenant base. There was many iterations, and eventually it ended up with this one that you see just there, beg your pardon, and that's the GAIL proposal that's gone to the FAA and MassDOT and has been approved. So we're going in the right direction, and this evening, we want to show you a little bit more about what's going on. So looking at the hangars, you can see there's a lot of squiggles there and a lot of numbers, but make that a little bit bigger so that you can see exactly what's going on. 30 new hangars, the top eight are 48-foot diameter, 48-foot width hangar doors, and the bottom 18 are 42-foot. Now, the difference between them all is between the FAC-T and the ones that we've got here is that we've actually placed the utility rooms facing each other. So it's going to be very easy for convenience for anybody that comes down to check electricity or whatever that's going on in there, just by moving from one to the other instead of walking all the way around. So looking at the hangars, you can see six hangars there with some workshops on either end, so we took that partition away and made them much bigger. So instead of having the standard 150-foot square foot, standard, we have 1428 square feet and 1575 square feet. So to give you an idea of what that's like, if you all know what a Cessna 172 is, it's got a 34-foot wingspan, I actually drew one out to scale and backed it in. So there's the plane, and the rest of the space can have a car in it, it can have a workshop in it. So this is all good development for the airport, and just to even it up, I put one on the other side as well. So the actual height of those doors is 12 feet, and you can see the 12 feet, and that determines the height of the actual rear tail. I see President Zarella smiling here, I don't know why, maybe it brings back memories, I don't know, but anyhow.
I just enjoy your presentations.
Thank you. If you look at the 48 doors, there's only four in those sections, but again, the standard size is 1392 square feet, with two large ones there at 1872. And remember, we've got 12 of those plus 18 of the 42s. So in this particular instance, yes, we want to put the small jets in there, so we do have a Cirrus SF-50 owned by Mr. Eric Scheffels down at the airport, and we drew that out as well, and we slid that in just to show him what he's got, and he's actually purchased two more hangars, and that's his SF-50, so.
You call me back, I'm at a meeting right now. Call me back in half an hour, all right?
Counselor Boishman, could you mute yourself when you do that, please?
I thought he was leaving the presentation. So basically, this is what we have, and these have a higher door at 14 feet, so you can get the larger jets in there, but we're talking about the bigger jets going forwards, irrespective of these that I'm showing you this evening. So this I put together for the COOP presentation that we needed to do for all departments within the city in case of an emergency, and identifying all of the buildings and the people in those buildings. And the reason I showed this one is because this is the area of land that we are proposing to do the building. So that's just a very, very quick presentation, but you can see here, this is the start of the Fitchburg Municipal Airport ground lease. What's the ground lease like? It's virtually 99% of the one that you all approved last year for the liflight, with a few modifications, because there's no living quarters in these hangars, even though people would like them, but they're not getting them. So, and the good thing here is that with those 30 hangars, the actual square footage area that the rental is, is 155,745 square feet, that at 50 cents a square foot will bring $77,872 in rent to the airport, plus the taxes that will be paid to the city. So I see this as a massive advantage for the airport in that position. So moving forwards, that's the presentation. I would sincerely like you to all agree to the signing of this agreement with the city and the airport and Rockin Horse Enterprises. So any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Kettle. This is very impressive. I also want to point out that I think that with all of these jets and other airplanes in those hangars, it's also going to be positive for us in terms of fuel consumption, correct?
Definitely.
And we do make a decent profit on selling fuel, so I think that this is a win-win-win.
Excellent, thank you.
I will definitely be in favor of this.
Thank you.
Counselor Green?
Yes. Peter, not only another fabulous presentation, but more specifically to Mr. Montana, can I ask what, this is just for the public and because we want to continue to promote Fitchburg in a positive way, what drew you specifically to Fitchburg Airport to seek bringing your business knowledge to?
I actually kept my airplane there, and I had my airplane in a community hangar, and I kept pestering Peter as to when there'd be more hangars to put my plane in, so it wasn't in a community hangar. So that was kind of what sparked the whole project off, so.
All right, and then how quickly do you, how quickly do you plan on being able to bring what you have to the table to this project?
We're currently scheduled to, with everyone's approval, begin construction on May 1st. There's some other activities that are going on at the airport before that that we didn't want to interrupt, so we're scheduled to try and start May 1st with anticipated completion somewhere around the beginning of September.
For all six, or for all?
For all 30 units, yes.
30, okay. Six big, big buildings that you're then just going to subdivide?
Yeah.
Not just subdivide, but I mean, just subdivide, okay. That's impressive. Will you be hiring local, or do you, with your LLC, do you have tradespeople in place?
We do, but we'll most definitely be hiring local contractors to assist with the installation of the units.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to continuing to do business with you, maybe other, maybe would we need a gas station built?
Right.
Or a boutique hotel, or some retail space?
Well, no more gas stations. I don't build gas stations anymore, so I'm sorry, I can't help you with that.
We'll find something.
Sorry, just two additional points. The first one is that the reason that they're only starting on May the 1st is because historically we've had the wings and wheels down at the airport, and that's on the 26th and 27th of April. So in discussions with Bob, he's agreed to start on May the 1st.
Okay.
But we're not building in that place, we're building the second phase first, because there's going to be another phase following this one of another 30 hangars, and then maybe another 30 on top of that, depending on how it goes. Because of the first 30, we sold 49, so we've got 19 towards the second 30. So things are really going really, really well, and the other thing that I forgot to mention--
And I might add, that's without advertising, so.
No advertising.
We haven't advertised any of these hangars yet.
Just word of mouth.
Or the airport, so.
Wow.
So the other thing is the 9/11 memorial is coming to the airport on September the 26th and 27th, so that's why that space is left. And then we'll put where the two big box hangars were, right at the very top, we're keeping that open so that Bob can start his work on May the 1st. So, and yes, there could be another, there will be another 30 after this, and maybe another 30, all large box hangars. So I believe that we can fill it, because people want to get out of Boston, they want to come out into the suburbs. They're fed up with Massport and people like this, charging extortionate prices. And looking at the actual figures that we're charging, 50 cents a square foot, that's common for all the GA airports in Massachusetts.
Right, and that sounds not, I mean, that doesn't sound expensive to me.
It's not, but if you think the, one of the larger ones of those, the 200-and-some-odd-thousand, that's around about $250,000, that hangar is. So, and they chose those, and the beauty about these hangars is we actually went in the basic spec to be nice and clean, nice and friendly, strong to last, catering for all the snow weights and everything else, but with no fancy bits. But if they want fancy bits, the utilities are going to be there so that they can put them in themselves. So it really is a win-win for everybody.
That is wonderful, so again, I commend all the efforts. I know that you've spent a lot of time thinking about that, and it's clear that you've had more than just a, you know, that your long-range goal is in place. So we want to see that, you know, come to fruition for us, because you know how many years we fought with or fought about the airport, so I'm glad that we're turning the corner and flying high with that. So thank you for your commitment to want to continue moving us in the right direction.
I'm happy to be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Van Hazinga? Counselor Van Hasinga?
So my first question is gonna be, is there room for further development if this are successful, but it sounds like you have grand plans to keep going as long as there's demand to build more hangars there?
We will go until demand's there, yeah.
So this arrangement is for a ground lease for the Rockin Horse Enterprises to lease the land, and they construct the hangars. Will they then be sold as condos, or will they be leased on a monthly basis?
They'll be condos, yeah.
Yeah, the condos.
Condos. And is that the same as the existing arrangement with existing buildings? And how does that work? Do you find that the owners take care of the properties and keep them up, make necessary repairs and things like that, or are you chasing down owners to fix doors?
No, we're not, surprisingly enough. If you look at the hangars and look at the cars that the people drive, the cars are terrible, but the hangars and the planes are beautiful. They keep it nice, it's their hobby, it's like a golfer, he keeps his golf sticks good, you know? So no, there's no problem there whatsoever, not at all.
Great, so this sounds like it's sort of a low-impact revenue source for the airport, that we don't have to maintain the buildings, we don't have to develop them, assume any of that risk or anything, we just lease the land, the developer does it, he sells them as condos, then we have happy users of the airport.
Just so that, I don't know if everybody read the agreements that I passed through to Diana, I think you sent it out to everybody, right? The leases 20, 20, and 10, the maximum that the FAA will allow, they will not allow any more 60-year leases, they've gone, they're history. So we've gone for the maximum, which is 20, 20, and 10. And the new proposed tenants are happy with it, so...
Great, thank you very much, I yield the floor. Thank you. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Andrew Kettle, as always, presentation's great and emblematic of the progress and the detail that you bring every day, so thank you very much for all your hard work. I think it's terrific, I just, some of my questions are already asked, I'm just curious as to how the development of the hangars will be balanced with the non-aviation use that is planned with the RFP that Counselor Craigan mentioned earlier.
Well, as you can see, we are getting a little bit of 50%, 50%. The, as Counselor Craigan said earlier, the development, the Fitchburg development is actually going out on the 26th of this month, I think, it's advertised in the Worcester Business Journal, and it really is a nice advert, I saw it today, so we're hoping that that will bring in the people for the restaurant, and once that's done, there's a 250,000 grand that we've got through Mass Development for the non-aviation land in the 12.2 acres, which is above where these new hangars are going to go. So it's all coming together well, I give them both equal opportunity, you know, hopefully we can get that side going as well as the aviation side's going.
Thank you, there's one other question, I yield the floor. Thank you. Counselor Fleming?
Yes, a couple of my questions were already asked and answered, but I just have to comment on, this is my eighth year on the council, and I've always been one of the biggest supporters of the airport, as most people on this council have been, and to see what we have built down there and how it's continuing to be built is just, it's just wonderful, it's such a great thing to see in Fitchburg, and I thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Counselor Craigan?
Sure, I'd like to thank you for the presentation, I saw it earlier, and I am so impressed that just the decision alone of reconfiguring the hangars to get the maximum advantage of sun, I'm assuming, Mr. Montana, that you, you, you obviously love to fly because you have an airplane, what in your, what in your opinion makes for a really powerful airport, an airport that people want to come and use and make it sort of a regular stop if they're going to be doing work in New England? Like, what are the, what are people looking for? Because I'm not a pilot.
Well, you know, one, they're always looking for, you know, a clean and upgraded airport, and Peter's done a fabulous job with the reconstruction on the runway. I think if you can get a restaurant in there, that would be, you know, an amazing addition, because I can tell you, being a pilot, you know, we fly a lot to, you know, get that hundred-dollar hamburger, as they call them, and a lot of the airports you go to, they have fabulous restaurants, but horrible airports.
Huh.
And this would be a, you know, that'd be a win-win for this one, because it's a beautiful airport. It's, you know, the upgrades have been fantastic, and, you know, it's, it draws people to the area when you have a nice airport, and when you have hangar space available, it makes it that much more attractive, especially when you get out of the big city areas, because big city areas, they, you know, they charge exorbitant fees for school, exorbitant fees for landing, and services at the airport. So it's, it's a win-win for the, for the city to, you know, to make the improvements that we're proposing, and, you know, it'll automatically draw more traffic.
That's really great to hear, and it's great to hear from your perspective, just one more question, Mr. Kettle, what more can we do? What, how, because we, I, I'm so pleased to do the economic development update, and I really appreciate all the granular information that I got about the airport, where, you know, we need to be thinking and talking airport, so where, where else? What, what, what else?
I think, to be quite honest, we're going in the right direction, and I can't honestly ask for any more than what all you city councilors are providing us with at the moment. It's, to me, it's, it's great, it really is, I can't think of anything else that we'd need. Maybe a nice grant for 5 million to extend the runway a little bit longer, but, you know, I, no, seriously, I don't think there's anything else that you can do, other than give agreement for this agreement tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Schultz?
Mr. Kettle, have you had, got an update on that non-aviation land as far as a hotel maybe going in there as well, as the restaurant?
That's not, in all honesty, the restaurant, if you remember about 18 months ago, we went out with the total non-aviation land, we got no responses whatsoever. So the joint committee decided, let's split it, let's go out with the restaurant first, because that's the thing that'll bring the people in, and if the corporate jets are coming in and they see the restaurant instead of us getting them food, that's gonna make them maybe think, well, maybe, you know, we could do something here at Fitchburg. But I think, once the restaurant's done and done deal, we've only got, I think, until the end of this year to take that $250,000 grant from Mass Development, so we've really got to work hard on getting the next 12.2 acres out for bid. So hopefully, our development team will be doing that within the very, very near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boishman?
Hi, Pete, how are you? Hey, Pete, I got a question for you. I'm reading over the contract here, and it says additional rent, tenor still pay the landlord, $868. Is that gonna go up every year, because the cost of living goes up, the wages go up, the health insurance goes up, and everything else, to keep employees?
There is a clause in the contract that discusses the CPIU.
Yeah, it says $72 a month.
Sorry?
It says, it's an annual rent figure of $72 per month.
I'm not aware of that in the agreement, Counselor Boishman. The actual CPIU is based on the CPIU from last year to this year as an average, so in this past year, it was 6.8%. On 5,000, that's a lot of money, it's not just $72. Within, within the, the $860 is for the snow clearing and the weed clearing.
Right.
That's what that's for.
Right.
That's in addition to the $77,000 that's going on to the rents that we charge.
All right.
Okay?
Okay.
Which is exactly the same as what we've done with FAC-T.
Okay.
And we have to be fair and equal to everybody, because the FAA demands that, so...
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, good job.
Thank you. Wow.
Wow.
Thanks, Paul.
Wow. Wow, new year, new leaf, wow.
What's that?
I think we should go do a wellness check on Mr. ...
Fever's making him delirious, right.
I'll just say I'm very pleased with all of this, you know, this kind of innovation and actively searching for good opportunities, not just taking what comes, but actively developing the airport, is very much one of the reasons that, I think I can speak for most or all of us, when I say we'll be sad to see you go, but you are, without a doubt, leaving us with an airport that is in a phenomenally better condition than you found it in, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. On the motion? On the motion, Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to take a second to also acknowledge, three, Mr. President, the willingness of this body to take this up tonight, to not delay the process, and to encourage and deliberately work with the individuals who show up to advance things for the city of Fitchburg. I know I'm patting myself on the back as well, but it's worth stating, because we hear the opposite way too much. Thank you, I yield the floor.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counsel Kuchar?
Yes.
Counsel Craigan?
Yes.
Counsel Cruz?
Yes.
Counsel Fleming?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Schiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Van Hasinga?
Yes.
And Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
That passes 10 members.
Thank you very much, and thank you both very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, thank you.